Hello guys, this is Cloud Katsune. I'm back for some more Harvest Moon. And uh, we are on the day of the 25th, which is actually, well, in-game we are, but in actuality though, we are uh, today is the 5th of November, which is good, so also it's a day off, so let me just eh, let me see. Day off? Right, and it is 12:00 AM right now, so it's very early morning. Well, no, it's midnight, so it's very early late night? Whatever, I guess, whatever, doesn't matter. Point is, it's late, and a chicken go away. Uh, I was debating on if I should make this video or not, because there's a few things I'd like to talk about. Egg, Chobu, good boy, good girl, whatever. I keep forgetting the chickens are girls. Oh god! I didn't even check the... Hold on. Well, good boy. Let me uh, check the weather, cuz fun fact, the reason why I wasn't sure if I wanted to record this video is uh, because the power had gone out, like, around 10:00 PM for about eh, fif- not 15, about 5 minutes. And whoa, 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 I got a magic dog. Okay! Uh oh. Okay, uh... Hopefully that's just me and not the game? Uh, but my, well, it might be my headset having an issue, because when the power went out, I don't know if it registered it as being charged or not, so it's showing green. So hopefully everything's okay, I can't tell. Let me uh... Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's recording my voice, so uh, hopefully everything is okay. Jesus Christ. Um, I'm getting a little nervous here now. I might, oh, Medi-Milk, that's right, she's doing that now. Look very happy today. And Romani, hi Romani, hope you grow up big and strong. But yeah, the, the power went out around 10:00 PM, it's now 12:23 AM, and it only was out for like 5 minutes, so I didn't do anything. Um... Did I let the other one with her? Or maybe it was the storm, whatever. I'm losing all my fruit! But... Um... It should've charged, like, I had it charging the whole time since I last recorded uh, on the eh, 30th of October, so it shouldn't be out of energy, I don't, I don't know. But maybe it's just having an, an issue, I don't know. I'm not gonna argue it, uh, as long as it's recording my voice, as long as it's recording the music, which seems to be doing on both ends. We should be okay. Should be. So, I don't know. I don't know. Hiya they! But um, yeah, so that was my night, and I was also we had a, a very bad storm yesterday as well, so that's why I didn't record, cuz I was worried that something like that would happen. And it didn't, and I was like getting like, hmm, I feel like recording, and then the power went out, I was like, okay, nevermind! And I waited a few hours before do, you know, actually attempting to record, cuz I, I really do want to. And one of the reasons why is cuz I have a few things to talk about, uh, good things. Very good things, except for I, I will say the story not so great of how it happened, but uh, long story short, I got the Pokémon OLED Switch, so hurrah! I, I got it ordered and it's shipped already, uh, so yay! It's gonna take a while to get here though, cuz it's coming from Florida, and I live in Oregon, so hoo-ha! You know? I don't know what's coming from way over there, when I'm sure there's like other uh, Walmarts that are closer that could ship it, but you know what, I don't know how they operate, so whatever. Point is, I got it, and it's coming, and it's purchased, and everything is A-OK. I don't have to worry about it anymore. It's coming. But um, the, the other thing I wanted to say though is Best Buy sucks! I was originally gonna buy it through Best Buy, uh, well, I actually had a couple websites open on trying to preorder it, but, or just order in general, because today, well, yesterday, on the 4th, was the day it was available to be purchased, but yeah. I just... Oh my god. The Diego by, goes by so quickly. See ya Cloud! I'm a burpy fiend, I just had um... What was it? Cranberry and grape? Apple cider? Oh no, it would be apple and grape, whatever. Apple and grape cider, oh! It's sparkly in my tummy and it makes me go bouchy, oh my god! But um, it's my congratulations drink, I got it! But yes, this is so, I had um, what's it, I had Amazon, Walmart, GameStop, Best Buy, Target, um... I think that's all of them, I had like 5 different ones open to try and get this, oh, and also had the official Nintendo website open, so 6, I had 6 tabs available to purchase that frickin' Switch, and uh... The Best Buy one popped up like 30 minutes before midnight, so I was like, oh well, okay, I guess I'll order it, and so I did. And it went through, the order was success, and then like barely a minute afterwards, they cancelled the order for no reason at all, with no warning, it just like, it's cancelled, like, oh okay. Uh, but I got refunded, so I was like, okay, so double checking, I got my money, okay, it's all there, good, good, good. And then uh, I waited until midnight to check the others, cuz I said fuck, you know, Best Buy, it's apparently not gonna work, so I'm not gonna bother with them. And the next one that popped up as available was Walmart. And that's where the problem came in apparently, because for some reason when uh, Best Buy cancelled my order, it freaked out my bank, and it thought that it was like a fraudulent charge, so I, I ended up having to buy the Switch via PayPal instead of using my card. Um, but eh, I got it, everything went through, I knew I had the money, I knew it got refunded. Um...
You're always running around with so much energy. Good work man, see you later!
Yeah. And we can leave the cows, yeah, cuz it's a frickin' sunny week, so we're, we're all good. Hoo-ha! So I'm just gonna go to bed and actually start doing part-time work again. That's gonna be nice. Get some of that work in. Oh, I have a weird dog. Well, you seem very happy to do a squall. You're glitching the system. Okay. I guess I could see if I can find anything in the dirt before I call it, but yeah, so uh, I would after the whole Best, Best Buy situation, I was worried that my order was gonna get cancelled again, so the entire night, I was just kind of fretting, like, oh, am I actually gonna get the Switch? What's gonna happen? Am I gonna get declined again? Is it gonna cancel? What's going on? And when I woke up this morning, or yesterday morning I should say, cuz that was on the 4th, uh, before I went to work, uh, it got confirmed that the payment went through, so I was like, okay, cool, 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 cool. And then, when I got home from work today, um, apparently it shipped out sometime when I was at work, around 4:00 PM. And yeah, so it confirmed that it got shipped, and like you said, it's coming from Florida, so it's, it's gonna take a while to get here, especially considering like there's a storm going on right now, and I don't know if that's gonna, you know, mess up the time of it arriving, but because it shipped out so much sooner, cuz it's, it's expected to arrive on the 11th of November technically, but it could totally arrive earlier than that, but we, we will see if it actually does. Uh, I'm just gonna expect it to be on the 11th, but if I get it earlier, hoo-ha! Otherwise, um, just be aware, once I get it and I got it all set up and ready to go, I will start do, to do the Animal Crossing let's play. And I put up a poll today, uh, well, tonight, last night, whatever. I'm choking. But I did put up a poll, where you can choose what to name the island if you want. Uh, I have a couple options. The first option was one, I was like, probably what I was going to call it, and then I asked a friend some options, and she suggested Mario Cho, or Morio in general, um... Or the Mob Psycho 100 Town, which would it be, um, depending on the translation, it's either uh, Seasoning City, or Chobu again, wow, hello. Or Spice City, so, and at least um, if I do like Spice City, I can actually make it Spice City Island, cuz it fits it up, like, it has enough letters to fit all of that, but with seasoning, it would just be Seasoning Island. So I ended up putting that on there, um, on the poll, so you could see what it would look like. Cuz it's up to, I believe, 10 letters. So, there, there you go. And I also gave it another option where like, eh, if you want me to do, like, name it something else, give me a suggestion in the comments, so it's, it's 100% doable on whatever you guys would want, except for, you know, obviously, it needs to be uh... You know, appropriate. No naughty words please, and also under 10 characters, so yeah. That's just the thing though, but yeah, I, I think the um, the Morio, or seasoning, or salt, or, I think it's Salt City and Spice City, um, would be very cute regardless, and Romani is also cute because that's what we are right now. This is Romani Farm, and then Romani Island, I could see either or, so whatever ends up being like the most voted for, that's the name I'm gonna go for, except for um, if anybody really likes the like optionals comments, uh, just put a like on that, on the comment, and that way I can kind of gauge like, oh well, uh, this one vote got like certain amount of votes, but then the comment of a suggested name actually got more, so I should go with that kinda thing, so. Just be aware, there's options. Trying to be fair with the name. And I also, um, let's see, it won't be raining. It won't rain for so, a while, so you can leave your animals out. I'm struggling with raining right now. Good work man, see you later! And I haven't decided if I'm gonna try to go for like any type of uh... No, I don't, um... Specific fruit or flower for my island, to be like, you know, native. I might? I might? I don't know, but um, I just know I'm gonna try to find a island that has a good symmetry with the like, the map for the city center, or whatever it's called. Um, where are you going? Stop going everywhere! Buuuh, yeah. You're really, you're actually really cute. Okay, I'm gonna do pee for part-time, cuz we petted our ca- our cow, or horse of choice, and then we're gonna go and do the feeding thing, but um... Yah 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 yah. I am definitely excited to make this frickin' island. It's gonna be great. Or very chill, you know, it's gonna be either or, but um, I would definitely say the first couple episodes will probably be more daily than the rest of the playthrough, so if you notice like, oh well, you were updating a lot at the beginning, and then you start slowing down, the, the reason would be because I can't play Animal Crossing every single day, that's too much, and I'll probably, I don't know, I haven't decided how I will play it, but knowing me, I might do it in like um batch recordings, where I will structure the videos based on the day I play, so like um, say on the 11th is the first day I play, so, and I do like 3 days of actual timeframe, so I do, oh fuck, stop, stop, don't do this to me headset! But um, yeah, so I uh, I do day 11 as my first day in the game, and then I skip, I time skip to day 12, and I make that a new episode even though I'm still on the 11th kinda situation, also um... My headset's breaking up, I am getting a little worried cuz it's not beeping or anything, it's just breaking up. And hopefully it's not cutting me out. Cuz it, it looks like it's recording, cuz it's, it's recording from my, um, the music is being recorded from the El Gato, and the El Gato's showing everything fine, so it has to be the headset. But if it's my headset though, that means it could cut me out, if that's a problem. Uh, which is not good, because I still have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4 more days I want to make of this video before I, you know, stop. God, stop breaking up, ah, okay. Hopefully it's just me and not you guys, or not affecting you guys. Um, probably should just leave. I don't wanna hang out too long if there's a problem. Ba 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 ba. Yes. Okay. I might have to um... If I do a second video, uh, I might have to reset up my system and uh, have myself manually plugged in instead of wireless, if it's gonna be like this. Unless there's a problem with my actual headset, and then, uh oh. This thing's not cheap. But it's, it's oh god, why? Why is it going quiet? It's weird, because like um, the, the sound is going off, but like I still see my volume for the mic going, so I don't know why the music is cutting out here and there for me. I don't know, it's, it's just weird. I don't wanna end this episode, because if I do, it's gonna be weirdly looking, and I, uh... I don't know. It's a pain to edit this footage, because I have to do a special little rigmarole, so you're not seeing a lot of dead air, or black border I should say. Yep, and the music, oh no, 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 okay. Sorry! The music cut out like just before I went to the next area, so I was like, uh... What? Am I, am I having a problem? What's, what's going on here? But nah, seems fine, seems fine. Oh my god! I'll just uh, I guess I'll try to speedrun this, cuz if there is a problem, I definitely want to get through to the end of the video, that is my goal, so oh my god! Ah! Okay, it did it again. It just cut out. I don't know why, I don't know why! Okay. Yeah, I don't trust him, uh, lucky day for me yo! Oh! And now it's glitching. Shit! I don't know, I don't know if it's the frickin' El Gato, or if it's my headset now. Ah, what's going on? Maybe it's my computer. Oh, and what is going on here now? Why, why did it cut out when I was trying to run? Jesus Christ! Yeah, that's, that's weird. Anyway, I'm having technical difficulties. Woo! Oh! It's gonna be really funny if you can actually hear this, but um, if it's only me reacting to it and like, it's coming out perfectly fine, that's gonna be even more weird, cuz like, why are you reacting to anything? I don't know! I don't know what's going on! Send help! Oh my god! And yeah, I think it's just my headset, um... Cuz, okay. Grow up big and strong, Romani. Pet. Okay. Um... Yeah, the, the reason why I think it might just be the headset is cuz I'm, I'm looking at the recording footage, and the sound didn't go off when it went off on my headset. So, it, it has to be the headset. But my voice was still being picked out even in this silence, so it's like, I don't know, it's weird, it's so frickin' weird! What is going on? I just wanna enjoy my game, man! And I'm I'm already like unsure if it's gonna be okay, um... Cuz the power might go out. And if the power goes out, I don't think it will save anything that I have recorded, but I won't be saving anything until I finish the, the episode, because I always wanna make sure everything actually got recorded or not, uh, before I make that jump. So, whenever you see, especially with this game, um, I will try and not save during a recording, and that's why. Hello! The only thing I can't do that with is um, Digimon Survive. But yeah. Oh, speaking of which, uh, I, I technically finished my level grinding the other day, so everybody, except for one, is level, the wild ones are level 60. There's one that I accidentally got to level uh, 61, but yeah, it was the Shellmon. I uh... I decided to release some Digimon that I evolved way too early in their leveling, and um, the ones that I had like lower forms for, I ended up you know, leveling up while I could, and then evolving them later on, so it, it did go a lot faster. You're actually really cute. Okay, let me mark part-time, whoops. That's what I get for looking away from the screen! Alright. But yeah, so uh, as I was saying before I got distracted by technical difficulties, Jesus Christ. Definitely let uh, let me know, would you like the Animal Crossing island to be called? And yeah! It's, it's gonna be a fun time anyway, I'm gonna have fun with it. It's been a while since I played the game, and I will, I, I think I already mentioned this, but just in case I didn't, I will be including the Happy Home Paradise in this let's run, or let's run, let's play, um... So I might not do it like every episode, but I might end a day with doing at least one customized home, so, nope. Headset, don't do this to me. So yeah, 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 yeah. Just be aware, I'll be doing multiple things, I will be working on my actual island, and then I'll be working on paradise. Homes, so. Happy home paradise! And I haven't really decided if I will be using the amiibos very often for this game, cuz like I said, one of the things I am going to be challenging myself with is every single villager that we get cannot leave until I have their photo, so be, be aware, that's a thing that I'm gonna be doing. So even if I get a villager that I really don't like, I'm getting their photo before I can let them leave. And um, I might pick a villager cuz I think, do you have to pick a villager um, via camping? Outside of like the one that the, the game automatically gives you, that you have to pick, uh, to get like all 10? Do you have to make another um... Uh, friend via the camping thing, or does it have to be through the um, the island? Nook Miles? I don't remember, it's been a long time since I've played the game from the beginning, so I don't know? But uh, I might pick a special card villager that I have, uh, that might either be one of my um Sanrio set, like uh, what's his name, the bear, the really cute bear, or um, no, uh, what's her name? Uh, the elephant? T, T, no, is she part of Sanrio? I don't remember. But a couple of my favorite villagers tended to be of like the sweet looking, like, I know there's like an elephant that's a teacup, and then there's the um strawberry rhino, whom I love, she's super cute, and then um, I also really like Punchy. Punchy is super adorable, can't go wrong with kitty cat. But one thing I will do, like near the end at, at least, um, I need to have one villager type of each, and I don't want them to be the same animal, um, unless if I go for like I mean, I guess I could go for like uh, mostly rabbits, cats, and or sheep. Those tend to be my favorite. But we, we will see, I don't know, I haven't made any decisions. And I don't wanna really have like the same villagers as I had in my main island, which, most of those that I mentioned are in my island, so, I don't know. We will see how it goes. Uh, oh shoot, I don't know if she's open right now. Whoops. Yeah, she's not, ah! Uh, closed Sundays, Saturday, okay, well, we're just gonna have to deal. Don't worry about it. I'll just try to not pick up too many flowers. Alright, so we have 3 more days of this recording, and then I'll probably call it only because I am kinda worried uh, about the power going out, and I don't wanna lose my progress too much. Sunny day, lucky day for us, it's Sagittarius. Okay, so we got 3 more days of nice, nice, nice sun, so we're gonna get some progress done, ooh, ah, special. Uh, I am so excited though, I am happy I got that Switch, um, I, I will, I will say though uh... One thing I still need to get for it is the micro SD card, so that, that I'm not ready with, um, but I, I will get it as soon as I can, cuz I don't think it's required for most of the games that I'm gonna be playing, but it will be nice to have a bigger one than the one that the game comes with. So I'm pretty sure Animal Crossing saves on the Switch itself, not the SD card, as well as Pokémon, that tends to be a thing, so we should be good on both of those when it comes out. I think also a lot of the games are saved via the cloud save, so there's also that. I'm just gonna have to get everything set up. Uh, one thing I definitely will be doing is um making some folders on the new Switch. And I haven't fully decided how it's gonna be divided, but I do know I'm only going to be applying um like physical cartridges and downloading digital games that I already have purchased on my account on it that I plan to actually play. Good morning, Cloud. It's been a while since you've come here. I came here yesterday. You gotta u- get used to getting up early. Oh, you've gotten used to getting up early, right? Yeah. But what do you mean? I was here yesterday. Oh my god. Is he okay? Did he forget that I was here? Uh, boy. Okay. So let's mark that today we're doing more part-time. Wah 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 wah. That was a weird comment. Maybe Bigzor sensed it like you weren't around like a day off or something. I don't know. Okay, let's pet the cow. Pet the horse. Horse! Okay. I really want that horse. Give it to me now. God, what was I talking about that? I was, I was on a rant or something. Um, or maybe I wasn't. I don't know. I got distracted by Bob saying a ridiculous thing. But uh, oh, right. Um, yeah, so I will be structuring like folders in like, I guess a way where um, well, I'm thinking to do it in a way so I might have like a folder of like maybe all let's play and then others that will be, you know, let's playing or I don't know, RPGs to play or I don't know. I haven't decided fully, but I'll be doing something so that in case uh I ever get to a point where I'm like, okay, so what do you guys want me to play? Here's a list and I can like show you a visual. But um, yeah, so that's what I got at the moment. Be ready because that Switch is definitely gonna be the main one I'll be playing. And I am, I'm aware, I'm aware that it is definitely a Switch that is better in handheld mode. And I will still be playing like, you know, in handheld mode, clearly. Cuz that's what I was doing the whole time with freaking Digimon Survive. I was playing in handheld mode, off-screen. So I will still be using it in handheld mode. Um, it just will be the one I primarily use for home or if I go to work, it might be in my bag. But um, so that I can play something on the really slow days where like nothing's going on. I finished all my work and you know, like I could just pick it up and put it down kinda thing. So that's definitely what I'll be doing with that specific Switch. I just won't be like, if for some reason I left town or I was traveling, it would not be the Switch I would take with me. That would be my main Switches, which is the one I'm current, I'm not currently playing right now, but it's the one I'm using for playing all the games that you've seen from my Switch, which is like Digimon Survive, Final Fantasy VIII. Uh, what else? Harvest Stella. I was gonna say Chronocross, but I'm not playing Chronocross on the Switch. I'm playing it on PlayStation 4. Uh, though I could play it on the Switch, but it would be the non-new game plus version. So, yeah. Okay, get me out of here. Alright, so I'm gonna call it a day. And we have two more left to do, so let us do that and then we'll call it an episode. And then I'll be a little bit more relaxed cuz I won't have to worry about the freaking power going out or anything like that while I'm recording. So, hoo-ha. I know I'm ignoring Gwen right now. Don't worry about it. I'll see her when I see her. I'm getting a little worried cuz the light flickered. So hopefully the power doesn't go out. Oh god! Okay, pap-a-pa-pa, zero percent. Capricorn. Okay, yeah, we got two more nights. Two more nights. Ah! Headset, don't do that. My god. I have I don't know what to do when it does this. It's freaking me out, man. Well, at least I wasn't, well, I was thinking about also doing uh Badjukazui, but I definitely don't feel comfortable doing Badjukazui with a bad storm where the power can go out and I do like a soft save and end up like hello, losing my progress because freaking power goes out. So, yeah. Hello. And actually, I'm wondering, are I think the, yeah, the spots are different. I did notice that. I was gonna say like, wait, are the spots actually different? Yeah, cuz she has like a little white line through her spots while Kremia has a full black one. No lines in between. That's really cute. Cute details. I like that. Like, well, I should say like anytime where the cows could be a little bit more distinct, I like it a lot. So they don't all look like the same freaking spotted cow. Which is probably why I really like games like this one, Animal Parade, and then the Story of Seasons series because their cows, like there's usually three versions of the same white cow, white and black cow. Um, and then there's always like that chance that you might get a brown cow, which is also great cuz I love the brown cows. Though you don't always get the pure black ones, unfortunately. That would have been a nice touch. Also, more colored chickens cuz I want that a lot. Okay, same thing. Cool, cool. Take my jam. Cool. Good work, man. See you later. When will your horse like me so it can be mine? I want it, please, and thank you. And just so you guys are aware, in case you're not used to this ending, um, Bob will come to you with a horse which is ready to be friends. Ha ha! Okay, and let's brush the cow. Brush the horse. Come back! Okay, and this was day twenty-nine. So let me mark that as done. Okay. I must skip that day. But yeah, I'll probably, I'll, I'll, I'll try to play Digimon Survive tomorrow. Well, I say tomorrow, today cuz it's the fifth. It's 1:00 AM now, so there will be a high chance that I'll try to play it later today after work. Um, which luckily I will have the free time to do now because uh originally I was gonna have the work phone, but then my aunt decided to drive up uh, out of town so that she can celebrate her nephew's, my little cousin's birthday. That is, I think, today. So the fifth is his birthday. And then she'll be there for like an extra day, so I have no access to the car. So my mom is gonna be the one who will be taking me to and from work because I ain't walking through the rain. That's, that's a freaking cold waiting to happen, you know? But um, yeah. So she's helping out there, which is really nice of her. Ah, which I, is, I guess also good because she was, she was doing her drinking binge thing again. God dang it. So now that she has something to do, she, she won't be hopefully drinking cuz I don't wanna deal with her drunk in the car. But also, you know, you shouldn't be driving and drinking. That's not safe. So, yeah. Yep. Yeah, I'm getting less. But I'm, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the whole setup with my freaking headset. I'm gonna keep saying this, man. It's freaking me out. Cuz it makes, it's, it's making funky noises every now and then. I don't know if it's by Elgato or if it's the headset. So I'm a spooked, is what I am. So, yeah. I'll probably, yeah, most likely I'll just do this one episode tonight. Uh, if things are okay, I'll do one more episode because I do want to get a little bit more of Harvest Moon done, at least up to getting the horse, as I've said in the previous episode. And then I would like not to burp. Um, and then, yeah, and then I would like to do some Badjukazui, do Rusty Bucket Bay and get to Clickockwood because that is one of my favorite levels. And I wanna play it so bad. But it's gonna be like a really, Clickockwood is huge. It's such a big level. Um, and I'll probably definitely need to make sure that the power doesn't go off when I play that one cuz I don't wanna lose any work. Woodworking is more like a hobby to me. I can make a birdhouse pretty well. See ya, Cloud. Okay, take my egg. Oh, actually, I have a copper, don't I? Should probably sell that. Yeah. Anything else? Nope, just that. Okay. Cool. Yeah, but it's been taking like the majority of the month to even get a horse. But then again, we did have a lot of not good days. So maybe one day it could be done a lot faster if there was no rain at all. Except for, you know, rainy season cuz that one you can't control. It's always on the calendar. But the other, the first week could have been less rain. Also, not sunny on Thursdays. That would have been nice too. Actually, how many flowers do I have now? Uh oh. Okay. Yeah, I definitely gotta sell. So eight and nine. Okay. Ah! And the reason also why I'm not sure if it's my headset or not that's been freaking out is because it's not beeping. It beeped one time before I started recording and then it didn't, hasn't beeped since. So it's like, okay, is it the freaking headset or is it not? Like, I have no idea. So, technology. It's freaking weird. Yeah, this, this headset that I'm using is not cheap at all. So if I have to replace it one day, it's gonna be like, oh god. No! But I definitely would get the same one just because I do really like this headset. So I like a headset that I can do both. Record and listen to music. Yeah, it's not there. I wonder what spawns it in. Oh, well. Ha! So one more day and then that is it for episode thirty, I think. Wait. Yes, episode thirty. And there he goes. Oh. That whiteness though. The glow was weird looking. It might be a PlayStation 2 emulator thing. Don't worry about it. Also, how much, I will need to make some more fruit, but, or more jam. But I won't worry about it right now. Okay, tomorrow's weather is gonna be very dry. Alright, so crises. And unfortunately, we can't see the next day. But hopefully, it'll be good. Ah! I just want it to be more sunny so we can get that horse and be okay. Uh, yeah. Oh, Poco! Nice! There you are. What are you doing over there? Silly squaw. Uh, I don't keep doing the wrong one. There we go. It's cuz I keep thinking I'm like on Bob's farm. I wanna get the milk taken care of first. But I don't have to do that because I have no horse. Okay. Media milk. I'll definitely be using that for uh some cooking. Already forgot, like, do I need um milk to make what I need? Or eggs? Not milk. Clearly it's milk. Um, there's some recipes that require like a certain size milk, like yogurt. I kind of forget which one is which. So I'm not gonna quote it because I don't remember and I'm not gonna say what it actually is if I don't remember. So there. Uh, don't worry about it. Okay, so this is gonna be the last day of part-time for this episode because this is Tuesday. And we'll have, let's see. As long as the weather is good, we should breeze by the next episode with more part-time work. But yeah, the weather could also be really, really shitty. You never know. You never know. When you take care of them every day, it feels like they're going to talk to you. No, seriously, you should try listening. Good luck. Good luck. Yeah. I mean, in, in, in a way, they will talk to you. You just don't understand what they're saying cuz they're speaking animal. Though you can kind of make an estimate guess like um cows or cats in general, they'll usually talk to you when they want something, like food or attention. Okay, she's just saying the same thing. Alright. Goodbye. Alright. Milk. Ah, go back! You're always walking away from me. Oh, stop! Stop! Okay. So unfortunately, that hasn't changed. I don't know what it's supposed to change into cuz I never looked it up, but yeah. Maybe next episode I'll actually have it looked up. Or I just will keep it unknown because why not? But man. Yeah, so, so far uh November has been pretty good. Hasn't been terrible. You know, outside of losing our manager. You know, outside of losing our manager. Um... And possibly... I, I don't wanna say that, I don't know, I have no idea what's gonna happen. But, uh, the new, the new girl, um, that I trained last, who, she's, she is nice and everything, but apparently she tried to throw a couple people under the bus, which is not nice at all. But yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna get into it, but I, I will say, so far, everybody's starting to dislike her now. And it's like, uh-oh! But, um, my, my opinion on her is, god, I want her to work out, because I don't wanna end up without another employee. But if it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work, you know? But we will see. But, uh, the, the thing that irked me with her the most, cause I wasn't there when she did the throwing people under the bus situation, even though she did try to throw me under the bus, but everyone else was like, uh-uh, no, that's, nah. Not okay. But, um, what irked me was the fact that she changed the schedule for the, the Friday that just passed, so that she had the day off, without letting anybody know. Like, I only found out because I saw a complaint note that she left, and I deduced like, wait a second, what day did she want off? And so I checked the, um, the printed-out schedule that we kind of go by, and it, she just crossed off Saturday, where, or not Saturday, Friday, where she was supposed to work, and didn't call our, our, uh, off-site manager and stuff like that. And it's just like, oh my god, really? So that's what pissed me off. So I had to make the call, make sure everything is good, that everyone has a shift covered. Um, cause if, if it didn't, like, no one would have been opening up morning shift, and then how the heck are we supposed to operate, you know? That's like, Jesus Christ. Ah. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's just all a bunch of poop, is what it is. Ah, headset, stop going mute, oh god. Yeah, I, I have no idea, cause it, it is definitely picking up my voice, um, but the sound is cutting out a lot. It's just cutting out for me, and me alone. Hey, well, I hope it's for me alone. Dang it. Okay. Ugh, stop cutting out, son of a gun. I'm really curious if you guys are like, not getting the sound? Cause it's showing that it's getting it, but I don't know. I don't know. Well, I'll, I'll find out when I finish recording. I'm sorry if it's cutting out really weird, I'm, I'm really sorry. I don't mean for it to happen, it just is. Okay, let's get rid of... Keep that... Oh, stop it, stop it, stop freaking out, oh my god! Oh my god. Ah! Well, at least this is the last day of recording, so... Hui ve! Buy my eggs, please? I got a lot! Uh, oh, he doesn't buy eggs. Shoot. How we go ahead again? 95. So I can collect the next batch, but I really need to sell them. Uh, I guess, okay, I'm gonna run over real quick and see if I can sell them at the bar. It might be too late. Ah, my voice hurt! Bury me. Just a quick little detour. Gotta get rid of these eggs, man. I got too many. Damn it, okay, are they closed? Mondays. Hmm, no. Oh, it's 6, okay, well... Eh, while I'm here. Let's get the thing I actually do need for a later thing. Okay. I just need... Uh... Sell. Take my, nope. Why does nobody take eggs? Okay, never mind, I wasted my time. Eh... So I'll, I'll just have to, uh, hope the Vila is open. So I could actually sell these eggs, Jesus. Unless, do I have enough to put them in the fridge? Or do I max out on that? Uh... Oh, well. Okay, let's see. How many eggs do I got? Yeah, I got, I got taxed. Oh my god! There we go. Almost got it, 100. Well, it'll never be 100, but... Yeah, let's, uh, make some jam real quick. While we're here, you know? Ah, but yeah, so that's my, um, update of what's been going on. Actually, I think by the time you see this video, um... Let's see. Did I write down when this one will be posted up? Uh... Oh, okay, yeah, I did, so you'll probably see this one on November. Unless I ended up, uh, you know, saying whatever, and just posting it right after the last episode. But I had planned to do, you know, more Digimon Survive. But eh, you know, I mean, I can schedule it whenever I want to. I don't have to make it on the 11th, cause actually I want this one to be a little earlier. So yeah, I'll probably just schedule it for the last time I uploaded. Um... Which will be, let's see. The last episode would be the 6th, so you'll probably see this on the 8th of Tuesday. So, yeah, I, I could, I could see myself doing that. That way you guys get a little bit more closer updates, change of what's going on. And who knows, maybe by then I'll already have the Switch, uh, if it came in early or not, you never know. You never know. So just, just be aware. It'll just be like a random Harvest Moon posting, instead of Digimon Survive, but... Yeah. Okay. So... That's gonna be it for this episode, and I hope to see you guys in the next one. And I also hope you have a really good night! Goodbye!